For the Macedonia Planning Commission meeting for April 21st, 2025, could we get a roll call?
Mr. Westbrook?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Mr. Wallenhurst?
Here.
Ms. Muske? Here.
All right, then we have approval of the March 17th public hearing minutes, which I believe is pretty much nothing, but anybody have any comments on that? Someone want to make a motion?
Approved as submitted.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and then the regular planning commission meeting minutes from the same date?
Same thing, I moved the date, approved as submitted.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. So first agenda item is 9764 Valley View Road, is there someone representing that? No? Do you know if we were expecting anyone to come for this?
Yeah, I assume, yeah.
I assume so.
Should we come back to that?
I mean, I can't though. Then if everything's going good.
Let's, uh, well, maybe I'll, I'll make a motion to adjust the agenda to move number one to later in the agenda to, I guess, move everything else up, move this to make number three to give someone an opportunity, if they're not here, we can decide if we want to address it. So make that motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then we'll move on to the next one, specialty lubricants, 8300 Corporate Park Drive, someone here for that? All right. Come on up. Have a seat. How are you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. So we've got updated information from you guys and additional comments, if there's anything you want to say or if you just want to jump into the comments?
Right to the comments.
All right.
Yeah. Mr. Franz, would you like to go over here? Throw that at you fast?
Sure.
Take your time.
Unlike my fancy colleague here to my left, I don't, I have good old fashioned paper. Okay. Um, so, I just lost my cover sheet for this. And this is, are we looking at, we're not looking at Pekanano, we're looking at specialty.
Specialty.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have paper? Do you have?
Yeah.
No, but a little more.
Okay. All right, so I think one of the issues, my report is dated April 5th, and this is to construct a, just under 50,000 square foot building to the existing 67-5 roughly on the property located at 8300 Corporate Park Drive. The final plan submission now depicts the outdoors screen area, the outdoor storage area being screened with a board-on-board fence, previously it was shown as, it was shown as chain link with privacy slats, we had a conversation with the applicant at the meeting about that, and appreciate that they switched that over to a board-on-board. So no, no, no concern there. With regard to parking, we know that there's not enough parking based on the code, but they did seek and were approved a variance for parking at the March 19th DZA meeting. With regard to landscaping, sheet L1 documents a three-foot tall mound that extends the entire rear of the proposed addition, approximately half of the existing building. I previously stated that additional landscape materials and mounting should be added to the west side of the building, so that's basically, and I kind of drew it in with a little purple area, a purple arrow, but just all, I think there was just one celebration maple in that area, just thought that that could be beefed up a little bit with some landscaping, fairly inexpensive to do. And then again, the outdoor storage, it is shown in my item number three as being screened by a board-on-board fence, just want to point out that that's 12 feet tall, and so that just need confirmation from the planning commission that's acceptable. Sheet E900 provides the photometrics for the site, felt at this point there's no action necessary, that the lighting levels are acceptable, and there's no bleed at the property line, so appreciate that, that's good. And then the stormwater drainage, there's a letter from Riverstone dated January 17, 2025, that describes the basin, and that would need to be confirmed by the city engineer. And then building architecture, sheet SK2 provides revised details regarding the existing proposed architecture, revised architecture is based on the discussion we had here at the planning commission meeting, that we had a conversation about utilizing the four-by-four metal louvers instead of windows to kind of add some symmetry to the existing building, the applicant had, has made that change, and so if that's acceptable, along with any final comments from the city's designer viewer, I think that piece can be approved. And then finally, just need a signature block on the final plan, the cover sheet for the planning commission chair signature. Other than that, we'd recommend approval, subject to those few minor items.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, do you guys have any questions?
All right, I have one.
Okay.
Ryan, what's the, is 12 feet normal or too high or too low? What's normal? Are you considered possibly too high? We're supposed to comment on it?
Yeah.
I don't know what was supposed, I didn't look at the rules.
Yeah, there's, I don't, there's nothing specific about the overall height in industrial, and typically you see a max set at 10 feet in industrial districts, but we don't have one, so I just felt that you should be aware of that, and I'm necessarily.
Would 10 feet do it, though? Would 10 feet screen it?
That would have to.
Yeah.
Well, wouldn't it be a little cheaper for you to put 10 feet up? We think it's better looking.
So I had a question about that, too, I'm not clear where that screening is going to be.
Yeah, we're just gonna ask.
Is that part of the building?
No, it's not, it's actually, it's out here.
Oh, but there, okay.
Yeah.
Do you have any details of the fencing, like Pam had asked for?
No, it's a standard.
I'm not concerned about 10 foot versus 12 feet, it's so far away from the street.
Yeah.
I'd be fine with it, if you guys really feel like you needed a 12-foot fence, you're obviously trying to conceal stuff, so it's not seen. And if it was right up by the road, maybe that'd be a bigger deal.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Giladi, do you have any, do you have any comments?
Uh, not really, the plan for this evening here is very similar to the previous plan that was submitted to the planning commission two or three months ago, so my comments from before hold. We would need proof that there are no wetlands here on the site, if there are, we'd need to see the wetland permit to disturb those. As Brian indicated, we would need, as part of the future administrative review and permitting process, we would need the detailed review of the stormwater management calculations, and of course, the entire set of construction plans as well. And the last comment I had on here from a few months ago indicated that the parking lot does need concrete curved around the perimeter, the drawings don't actually say one way or another.
Nino, you have anything?
No, we're good. So 10-feet-high fence, that we're looking at?
I think unless you feel strongly, about 12, unless you have a need for the 12.
No.
Okay, okay. I think, you know, it's not up by the road, but again, it's also not right up against the building, if it was upright against the building, 12, 22-foot, I think, but if we're out in the park, I'll give you the 10 would be a little more.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Scott, do you know if there's anything in Pam's memo?
I was reading Pam's memo, HVAC equipment, it was asked to be located on the plans, do you?
Yeah, we don't have that yet, still no design of that. It'll be on construction drawings.
Okay, what about, so she also called for the details of the fence, and then the gates and materials used for that, for the, for the enclosure, so do you not have those either?
We don't have those.
Did you get Pam's memo?
Uh, I don't recall any of it, so I guess.
If you'd like, I can give you mine.
Okay, yeah.
And you guys do not have a dumpster, correct?
Correct.
And what color will the fence be, are you staining it, painting it?
Staining it.
Staining it, correct.
So you got the parking variance, you're willing to add some landscaping, some additional landscaping, 10-foot high fences, good, I think the lighting is good, stormwater will go through Mr. Giladi eventually. I think, yeah, details like the HVAC and stuff like that systems, I think you got a lot of work, roof, I think we, you might even have talked about the side of it, roof's so massive that it could be somewhere, you'd have to be in a helicopter to see it, probably be down there. So this thing, as long as it's, yeah, not visible.
It won't be on the edge.
Okay, good, that's probably the key. Is there any other items? All right, does anybody want to take a stab, or you want me to?
I'll go and take a stab if I want to.
Go ahead.
I'll recommend that we approve the applications submitted with the comments by Mr. Franz, any of the outstanding items being addressed in the final submission, that the outdoor storage fence be reduced from 12-foot to 10-foot, and final details and drawings be submitted to Pam for final review for the enclosure, along with just a location plan showing where the rooftop units will be. And Mr. Giladi's notations also, that there is a plan provided showing if there are any wetlands, or at least at a minimum, a letter. Yeah, and this can all be done administratively between Pam and Mr. Franz, along with Nino and his staff.
Okay, I'll second that one. Turn off the heat, I'll second that, is there any more discussion?
Mr. Franz, did I, did you have to finish on something I said? I just want to clarify that in your motion, I think I read you say that it would, the screening fence for the outdoor storage would be stained in a color to match the building?
Yes.
And then that the rooftop unit locations, both the location and then screen methods, if necessary, are provided on these revised.
Yes, Pam will need to review that final, before final approval can be given.
Got all of that, Susan?
I think so.
Okay. What's the videos for? All right, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so just work with the staff to get that last little items, glad to have you. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, next up is Peak Nino, I assume that's what you're for, here for?
Yes, sir.
All right, come on up.
We should call Phil Migliore, he's right next door, you know, that's where he went. Should we?
He knows about the meeting. He knows about the meeting.
How do you know where he lives?
Can we do it about it?
It's a publicly advertised meeting, I wouldn't worry about it, Mr. Cox.
I am Trevor, the guy who's doing the application.
All right.
Welcome, Trevor.
And, yeah, I was here last month. I promised you the sample board.
Wow, nice.
And flip it over, the actual materials are on the back, or the listing of the materials.
Let the skeet cover it.
Yeah, send it over to the. The guy with the letters after his name. Looks like the drawings.
So, I guess, yeah, what else, or what's changed, or?
Well, building-wise, not much. We did address the comments in the first go-around for civil, Matt Weber is my civil engineer. And you guys have the landings.
Yeah.
The landscaping comments I picked up, and what I ended up doing with the landscaping and the site photometrics, I did make it readable. Maybe the numbers are a bit larger, so you don't have to zoom in on the, on the PDF all day long. I did extend the landscaping down and modified the counts in the schedule, so that was asked for, for screening purposes. And I added some sightline studies. Now, the sightline studies, and I did have several conversations with Pam about RTU screening for the roof, and the thing about Pekanano and their process is they are mechanical equipment-intensive, and we were putting a lot of units on the roof, and now we had a meeting last week to save on the cost of steel, or the depth of the steel, or the girth of the steel for the roof to hold the rooftop units. He agreed that he could put a lot of them on the floor space inside, because this is 240,000 square feet, and where they're coming from is more like 30,000 square feet, 40,000 square feet, so they're getting some contracts in, but they have the floor space to accommodate. We had a mechanical equipment mezzanine on the inside, that's out, so we're using floor space. He's in the process of kind of value engineering, because we redid the budget, and the numbers, I don't know if we pick them up off the floor. Kind of had to reevaluate some things, and one of the things to reevaluate, and I know that I can't use cost as, as an issue to ask for a deviation here until it becomes that issue. And I did the sightline studies after I had talked to Pam, and I went and I drove past the site and down Valley View, and I did my distance studies, and the reality of actually seeing the rooftop units are slim. I'm not saying it's impossible, or they're not going to happen, and Nino's laughing at me because he knew this was coming, right? He gave me, he gave me a heads up about Pam, and she's.
She still complains about the knee deck.
The knee deck and rooftop units. Every time she goes by 48, she sees those and she's driving. Yeah, but you can see, you can see them, right? But here, the average distance, the face of this wall, the average distance is about 700 feet from Valley View, and I brought my laptop so that we can bring up Google Earth if needed, because there's some really good tools, I don't know if anybody knows how to use it, and I can show you some views, I can pan down in 3D view, I actually built the model and dropped it into Google Earth, so we can get some, some things, if you'd like to see those. But upon entry, this line of sight one, LOS one, this sheet here, I dropped in four cars, five cars, and the first one is at 660 feet away, and I picked a point on the roof, now I understand you're not going to look at one line, one plane, and you'll have a range, but I had to give a graphic of somehow, so from point A to point B was 660 feet. That's two football fields. That's two football fields, and we're looking at a rooftop unit screening, that is what I talked with Pam, was the length of this building for the number of screens, and around the corner, which ended up being like 400 lineal feet. Okay, it was a $130,000 add to the project after we designed it and planned it out, and I have the details in CAD on the computer, if you'd also like to see those.
But you don't need that anymore, correct?
Well, that's what I'm saying, after I did my study, you know, it, this car at this point to, this point on the roof, you know, to the face of the wall is 660, but there's trees there, right, so I don't, and it shows in the, in the site section, trees are blocking the view.
Do you own the trees, though, or are they on the residential lot?
They are on, they will be on the Pekanano lot. So I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, the closer you get, the angle makes it harder to see, and I did, I did agree with Pam that we can, we can push the HVAC units back. This, this wall here is, here in the corner's office, those will be smaller units, and then back this way is warehouse, so there's not going to be a lot of rooftop units heating and cooling the warehouse, especially heating, because they have furnaces in there, they're going to use that.
I agree, do you want to leave them on the roof, or are you being forced to put them somewhere else, and you prefer to leave them on the roof despite what Pam says? Is that what you're saying?
Well, I guess what I'm getting at is, they're value engineering them to take them off the roof and put them inside on the floor.
Is that better for you or worse for you?
It's economically better for the client, for us as the builder, you know, it's easier, yes.
What are you asking us to do, to overrule Pam on this issue?
Yes, sir.
Well, now, her issue is that you want, you want it on the roof and screened, but you're willing to take some of them down and put them into the?
They will take some of the big ones down, yes, sir.
And that'd be, that'd be okay, but she wants them all up there and screened, is that what she wants?
She wants, she wants it all screened, now, so screening, there's a couple options, I could do pocket screening around individual units, and that would probably add up to more lineal footage of screening than just a straight wall and screening it all, and the straight wall would look better, but when I started digging into it, it's like, you know, the only time I'm going to see this stuff on the roof is if I'm at the top of Valley View looking through the treetops down on the building, and that's.
You prefer no screening?
I prefer no screening.
Because it's so far away from Valley?
Well, it seems pointless, the closer you get, the harder it is, because I can, I can pull the units back away from the edge, because structurally, we want those rooftop units near a column line, right, not midspan, that's going to vibrate the roof and work things loose, we want them near column lines, and that first column, right?
I probably, I was a little confused on what you wanted.
Yeah, I was, I was building up to the real ask there, but you gave me to, so I.
How tall, or how high off the roof line would the biggest unit be that you would have?
So, small SUV, no, I'm sorry, big SUV, so six-foot, seven-foot tall, but if it's, if it's back away from the edge, you know, sure, you can see it, you can see it from a distance because of the angle, but as you get closer, here, the trees are still in the way, but once I get past the trees, I'm at an angle where, where my, I can't see over the, the edge of the building.
Yeah, you don't get to choose the color of these units or manufacturing versus the color of the roof?
I've, I've been in scenarios where we have been able to paint the rooftop unit, but I've also been in the scenario where like, don't paint it, you'll avoid the warranty.
Yeah, it's, it's a fun one, I don't think that's a good idea.
Because, I mean, I understand the trees thing, too, but then all of a sudden, two years from now, you guys decide to cut those trees down or something.
Or fall and winter.
Where they get a disease or whatever, something like that.
But even then, that's 600 feet.
I don't disagree.
It's a good point, you're certain rules we have to follow.
I don't disagree with the distance, and I don't, I agree with the stance on the fact that like, the minute you start screening each individual unit, that's going to get costly.
And I don't even know if I like the way that look, too, because then it just looks like the units.
You're going to see a bunch of boxes out there, something that you're going to see. My, my thought, without seeing any of this, just initially, is that maybe just where those units are close, or you just screen two sides, or maybe just only one side, I don't, I mean, if you can't see, like, I guess I'll use this as an example, if you can't see this side, and it's more just these right here, maybe just put something like.
And I'm convinced at that point, you're not going to see them.
No, you're not going to see them at that point.
It's this distance here, which is what, what I'm thinking about is the residents that live here.
Yeah.
And then the traffic on this road.
Correct.
It is, you have to kind of be looking for it to see it, but, and then, are we being consistent with other things we've approved or disproved, so?
Yes, what, you know, at, at some point in time, you know, there's, there's, you know, how far away do you want to screen things because of the angle? So here I have a model of what we're proposing, and if I can get it to, there we go.
It's probably, it's a part of the video, is it?
No, it's not.
Yeah, yeah, it's trying to look for, but here on the top of, this is the backside, and if I spin around.
I don't think it's a concern, I don't think, I'm not worried about the backside personally.
Yeah, so, so from leaving the neighborhood, and I actually have a picture of this from my dashboard, you know, I have to zoom in.
Is that the picture you included in here?
Uh, yeah, yeah, line of sight on LOS two, I did include that picture. Now, if I'm over here, coming down Valley View, I'm a little bit, slightly higher than the, if I'm sitting in an SUV, yes, I'm higher, and you can see units whether that six-foot screen wall is there or not, because I can see the back corner.
Yeah, but that's not street level, that's above the treetops, that's higher.
Right, right, and.
You'd have to get drones to see that.
Yeah.
So, I don't, I'm going to ask a question, you may not be able to answer, but that, this picture here, when you see this, whatever it is, a salt dome or whatever they have there, do you know about how high that sits in relation to the building you're proposing?
Um, I, I, I don't, I guessed, because I couldn't see, I couldn't see treetops beyond it, so I guessed it to be about as tall as, as, you know, a typical tree that's of, you know, 14 to two-foot round trunk at chest high, and that's, you know, it's purely a guess for me as well.
Do you have an idea about where these units are gonna, I'm just asking, because I'm trying to make sure we need a comfort level, because what you're, what you provided, I think is great, I think it's just kind of more, I don't, I personally don't feel like you need to screen all four sides of it, because if you're only going to see one side.
Well, I was only, one side was 380 feet, that's how big this building is, and that's the short side of this building. Yeah, so I, I, I think, initially, I was going to ask for. Yeah, so I, I, I think initially, I was gonna ask for like, hey, can we, can we come back and wait till these units are placed? And then revisit the screening? But then the detail of the screen walls are through the roof and anchored to the joists.
Can you just anchor the wall, can you do them off of the, I know they make screening units that go up, attached to the units. Can you do those instead if we were to agree to that, I guess?
Some of those units will avoid, don't want that, you know? So, yes, they make them to where, you know, there, there's kickers and they lean back. And then there's sandbags. And then we gotta restructure our steel.
Then you're adding weight to it and volume.
So our first, our first column line is, is about forty-five feet in. That's where we can have the units. But the, the, the big equipment is gonna be here and here. Those are your two biggest ones and then some supplementary equipment here. So it's gonna be, some of those bigger units are going to be further back.
And those are the ones that are about, we'll just say the max ten feet high is kind of what your estimate is or shorter?
Oh, I wouldn't think they'd be ten. I, I, I would say six to eight, eight max. Well, on a curve, yeah, on a curve, maybe eight, eight max. Enough such units sit on a-
I don't think you're gonna see those from way back.
Oh, no, I mean, this-
I'm, I'm, I guess my, my-
This, this study here shows, if you zoom in, shows a man at that column grid.
Yeah, I did see that, actually zoomed in.
Yeah, so he's, and then that is a unit that I got offline and scaled the unit to be six and a half, seven feet. So I, I, I did put that there to scale.
And those are your shorter units where that's what you're thinking is gonna be along that column line? Your taller ones are gonna be, the ones that are gonna be closer to the six to this depiction are gonna be more along that backside. What is, so the, the ones that you're planning on placing along this first column grid right here are gonna be even shorter, correct?
Yeah, they'll be smaller for sure, cause that's all warehouse. And we're not gonna put a big one up front and duct cooling and, and air conditioning to where it needs to be in the middle of the, in the site. We'll just poke through the roof and have a, a diffuser, four-way diffuser without the ductwork. Yeah, and- Come on, computer, catch up. Oh, I'm stuck by a tree.
You're up.
Okay. So, yeah, so from Valley View Road, I don't think you're gonna see the units. I mean, you might, you might see the tops of, of some of the closer ones, of the bigger closer ones. But it's no different than looking across the street and seeing them at, at the top of the tractor farming fleet. You know, they have, they have the walls, but you can still see the tops of them back there. And for point of reference, I went ahead and checked, you know, this seat here in the middle of this, two eighty-two is about seven hundred feet, just to give a distance.
So on that view, this is related to what we're talking about, but I, one of the questions I had was regarding the trees that you were proposing along that driveway in and then also along Valley View? Now, of course, I just wanna talk about this. Okay, so I'm not a landscape architect, but I'm looking at the schedule size here. Some of these things say six foot, the others say two point five inches.
So that's at planting?
No, it's a caliper size, right?
So, yeah, that's why I just wanna make sure that it's a caliper size when we're dealing in inches and feet.
Really short trees.
And that's right. I'm like, just because it's documented and we're gonna vote on something, I want it on the record that these are not gonna be two and a half inches.
Swerve passes.
Yeah, yeah, it's a caliper at chest height.
So is it fair to say that that could be around a six foot tall tree, maybe even taller?
It'll be ten.
Yeah, because that, well, the, the view move, but I think that really helps that view for sure.
I do too.
A lot.
Yeah. And we're in the midst of-
Put lots of trees up.
I, I could be wrong, but I think it'd be hard pressed to see them, I do, I, I-
What, what are you saying? I can't hear you very well.
I said I'm gonna be hard pressed to believe that you would, that you're gonna see them. You may see pieces of them, so I guess.
Let me ask Kevin or maybe Brian a question. Are we allowed to overrule Pam and say, you don't need screening up there? Can we do that today? I, I, the question would be a yes or no, you know, can you, are we allowed to do that? And, you know, I'd be prone to do that. I, I think we do that. I know it's a, an idea and it's in other rules, but this particular one is so far back that I, I'd be prone to do that if we allowed to overrule Pam on this one.
In fact, showing you this in Google Earth was her idea because we had a Teams meeting and I was showing her. And she's like, hey, this is great, make sure you bring this to the planning meeting.
Do you have, could you have like a plan, like showing about where those units are gonna be? Like a, a, a plan just to kinda give us an idea? Cause I have, I have another, just kinda, I guess, just a thought that you'd offered up potentially that if you had to go back. So what I was gonna say is, is like, kind of, if, if they're visible and we have to have, and we have a problem and we have to go back and have you screen them, how many are we talking? Like, I mean, cause again, I don't feel like you need to run. I, I don't believe you're going to see, it, it's more like the ones that are gonna sit like right here at this corner that are, are potentially gonna be visible. So are we talking a couple there? And then my thought is, is to just say, and I know there's an additional cost that, but do some of your prep if you had to put them up. Maybe you don't, and great.
I, I felt comfortable talking with Pam and agreeing that, hey, our units will be no closer than forty-five feet to the edge. And then we agreed, how about a six foot screen twenty feet from the edge? Cause it's not really load bearing.
Even for the office ones, about that front corner?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, the units will be central to the office. The office is, is two stories and it's a fifteen thousand square foot footprint, it's in this corner right here.
So they would probably put them closer than forty feet, right?
Yeah, but not, not closer than twenty behind the screens.
Oh, okay, alright, I'll-
Not to mess with your design, but, well, I mean, you already do, this is, this is raised up higher anyways.
It, it is. And so the thing about raising, raising up precast tilted up panels is that's already forty, forty-six almost, you know, when you, when you take the foundation and that one being raised up more, it's, it's closing down on fifty feet. Well, they're trucked in. And a truck bed is fifty feet.
I'm trying to think of a way to just make everybody feel comfortable with it, cause I, again, I don't-
You know, we could put taller trees up, up by the rail. And, and I don't know what, I'm not a green thumb, I don't know what, and I have the landscape plan that-
She's a green thumb.
I'm just thinking, I mean, you did mention, you know, very little, what?
I didn't mean to, I wasn't a mental, I was-
Oh, God, no, I guess so.
She's our tree person.
You did mention that the deciduous trees, you know, correctly, are not gonna have a lot of, you know, density in the winter. I wonder if we could do, or you could do-
Evergreens or?
A couple, at least space them in a little, just something to bring that foreground, just so it's, you're not, of course, we wanna make sure we're maintaining site lines, especially it's a high-traffic part of the site, but-
I think if you put them up away from there, I don't think you would have a problem. That's not a bad idea.
So you're talking along, along the railroad lines though, or?
Well, kind of just intermixed with where he's-
So where they are now on top of the mound.
Am I correct that maybe these, these are theirs that they're proposing? So mixed, just tuck a couple and, but you kinda get that under story.
So those are, yeah, so those are Norway spruces that are sprinkled in there.
Yeah, they could grow fast, okay. Oh, yeah, I see, I do see an evergreen in your section.
And they'll be taller than two and a half inches? I figured it was either an heir or a caliper. I wanted to ask for the record.
And that's at, that's at planting, right?
Yes, that's a, that's a very typical nursery size, a caliper size. That's actually a really good idea.
So do you have an idea of where those units will sit or not?
Okay, so here's, uh, shows the grid line.
Yes.
Okay, so this bay here is eighty-two foot wide. And there's a large, very large, five hundred foot long piece of equipment here. And it, it ends, you know, about here. And then this becomes warehouse. So they're going to be, the, the larger ones will probably be back in this area. Here, so it's going to be one hundred, two hundred, you know, almost, almost two fifty, three hundred feet back.
From the edge plus whatever.
From, from the Valley View, Valley View roadside, yes. The, the bigger ones, I'm not saying there won't be zero up here, I'm just saying that-
No, 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 I'm following it, you're, you're good. So it's, my guess is it's gonna mainly be that, that corner where that office area is gonna be potentially where we, somebody may have some heart-
Those are, those are office units.
So how, how high are those approximately?
Four feet, five feet. Four, four feet, maybe, maybe five foot on, on a, sitting on a curb.
You said that guy that you got in the image is six foot tall is about what you scaled him at?
Yeah.
So you might see, so it's gonna be a foot shorter than what that is.
Yeah, so if this is, if this is twenty feet and, you know, say his belt is, belt line is, you know, halfway, that's three feet, four feet. So the first, so the, the first, so the first two low lines are these two cars out here.
Is that taken from this, like, this corner, like your higher point? Cause my guess is you're gonna have some units like right in that area. Are that, is this-
No, that's, that's all open atrium stairwell.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that whole, that whole box, if you square that off in the plan, is open to below.
Stairwell, okay. Alright, so your units are gonna have to sit back further, okay?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just wondering if that took, cause like your visual right there, well, yeah, but I guess what I was getting at is, is your visual, can you zoom into that for just a second? Your visual really doesn't take into account the additional couple of feet you're gonna have for this corner element, which is gonna block more of the view, correct, or does that?
It's kinda there.
Well, no, that's, that's, no, that does not take into account that, cause this section is not drawn through that.
So you're-
This section is drawn through.
Oh, it is, right, it's drawn back further.
Yeah.
So, so what I'm saying here is, is this corner element?
Yeah.
Where I think you're gonna have more visibility from is actually higher than what-
So that's not depicted in that little-
It's not, it's, it's actually, I guess, what was, what would you say it is, like height distance from here to the top of that? I mean, that's gotta be at least another five.
Is it raised or is it just the green? Just pretty much provide the screen.
It does, and that's kinda what I'm, that's what I'm trying to visualize.
Stuff back in there somehow.
Well, he said that this right here is an atrium, so they would actually be beyond.
Yeah, but be aligned with that just farther back, right?
I kinda feel like you're-
So, yeah, and, and- If I may?
Of course.
You may. The way the code reads, screening is viewed from the public road or the residential neighborhood, which is further away. And so it's really just from the road that we're worried about, truthfully. I think the addition of some evergreens and, I don't know, I mean, you know, why throw pin oaks in there? They get pretty darn tall, right?
Yeah.
Have a nice big canopy, put them up, up near the, the frontage where we were talking about. I don't think you're gonna see, you're not gonna see them from the road.
I really don't either. I, I feel, I mean, between the visuals and also just kind of thinking through that, I, I really feel like you're, you're not gonna see them. And especially the larger units are further back in their-
Yeah, the, the equipment.
You could stipulate that as part of your approval, that that final mechanical layout be reviewed administratively?
Trevor, I'm-
Revised site section.
President, I thought if we have a conversation, myself, you, Pam, and, you know, include you in there and we'll get it solved, I mean, it's just-
Yeah, I, I'm, I, I mean, I feel pretty comfortable with what we're looking at right now, that, that you're not going to see them. I feel with the landscaping changes, the larger, I mean, if the larger units were on that side, I think we'd be having a different conversation potentially, but I feel, I feel pretty confident that that unit's gonna be a foot plus shorter than what it is right now. And it's potentially gonna be blocked by that corner that's gonna jump up a little bit. I, I just, I don't feel like you're gonna-
Well, I, I, I think the unit is set back far enough.
Yeah.
This size unit will be several bays in.
Correct, yes, yeah. This is like a worst-case scenario, which is showing us.
That upper, the raised parapet that you're talking about, it really only happens at the corner, but there's so much more building left or right of that.
Yeah.
So that's why I didn't really, I don't wanna account for that as being screening because it's, it's such a small percentage of what is in the view of the building.
So is, so that truly is the top of your wall and then you have water, like, is that like a foot or six inch parapet there?
Yeah, this is, this is parapet because we don't, there are some places in the elevation that dip down in elevation too, and those aren't for overflow.
Oh, I see that, yeah, okay.
So-
But you don't have any on that one side we're, that we're talking about, really?
No.
There's none on that side?
Yeah, this side is all straight. And it has to do with, if I had my way, I would have a center ridge roof and shed it two directions. But it's, it's too long to do that because of expansion joints and metal decking and, and-
Yeah. I'm good with, with, with doing some landscaping changes.
What they're showing really is adequate. I mean, if we wanted to get picky, we could say maybe diversify the evergreen that you're showing there just in case some blake comes through and knocks out all the Norway spruces. I mean, I still have something there. But, you know, and, and maybe kinda to your point, that corner is such a showcase and I wonder, you know, the attention isn't gonna be on the units, it's gonna be on that corner. So, I mean, is there anything to be said for, just drawing your attention away from it?
Yeah, I don't, I really, I'm, I would jump in on a call with, with Pam and everybody. I think what I would recommend that for that call would just be to have the low, like, however many units you're gonna have, just show them going down that line, I guess, and, and the height. And again, I, I really feel-
Yes, I can show units, I just don't know how soon because the mechanical design is, is still ongoing. It's not-
I think, I mean, I'm comfortable giving a conditional approval based on that. I don't, and again, I feel, if you come back and we see those units, I'm gonna be very, very surprised. And I think you would be too.
I, I would be, so, um-
You've done your, you've done your homework on this to, to give us the comfort level. I mean, had you not shown us those other things and we're kinda trying to generically talk to this, I think it'd be a different discussion. But you've done a lot of work to, to prove the fact that you're, chances are you are not going to see those.
So the, the, the conditional approval of coming back and, and having the ad screening later could be challenging. And I'm not saying don't do it, I'm just saying, I'm saying because of the way we're designing the screening to puncture through the roof because tomorrow, if tonight goes well for me, tomorrow they're gonna submit to building department for corn shell. So Peak Nano has ordered equipment from Germany that's showing up later this year, so we got to have walls and roofs for, a home for it.
I think when I say conditional approval, I'm just saying, like, that it would just be one, like, I, I, again, I don't wanna speak for the rest of the commission. I don't have a problem with, you know, if everybody else agrees and we're good and you submit for building permit tomorrow. And then we're gonna just have a follow-up call, like you, myself, Pam and, and Nino, quickly to show like where those units are. I mean, I'm assuming that's gonna probably be in the next week or so, or week, two, two weeks maybe?
I, I, I did sit through a Teams meeting with Dan Bauer from K Company, who's a mechanical engineer. I think he owes units and weights next week. I don't know if he owes locations.
Even if they're generic, I guess, I, I'm, I'm even thinking again.
I mean, I can get, I can get him to commit, hey, nothing large beyond this column grid, I think.
I really am. I mean, again, I, I guess I just wanna make sure that we, we as a board are giving as much, we have as much of a comfort level for anybody that comes back and questions it, I guess, and that's just the biggest thing.
What's wrong with the final review conducted administratively like Brian suggested?
What we're talking about right now.
Well, it's not exactly conditional approval. It's, uh, we would, we would allow the plan to- Well, it's not exactly conditional approval, it's, uh, we would, we would allow the plan to go through, and then, uh, so we're saying, well...
I guess, conditional is, I guess, maybe different than finalizing something administratively, is that what you're saying, Tony?
Yeah, I think so, it, it, uh, Brian suggested final approval, uh, administratively, instead of us doing conditioning and talking to Pam and, and, and debating it back and forth when we're not here as a board.
I guess, and, and maybe, I mean, you're not gonna bring something in that's gonna be, like, showing this mast thing on the corner, you know, you, you're not, you know, so I don't know if there's anything new that's gonna be, you know, in your, if you guys would have a...
I mean, I would, I would, I would think, just given the studies you've done, if you all of a sudden get this information and, and realize that there's gonna be a unit seen...
Yeah, and I'll call Pam.
Yeah, well, I, I kinda hate to have, you know, one, one board member, uh, changing things a little bit, and we're not, not here, we'd have to have another meeting then. Uh, while I'm at it, there was something I wanted to bring up, do you have a dumpster, are you gonna have a dumpster out there or not?
Yeah.
That was another Pam's suggestion, that has to be a self-closing door dumpster, and I've always wondered about this, and, uh, I, I looked up the code, there's nothing in our code about a, a self-door dumpster, and, and other people have said, geez, we can't find that in your code. So I don't know what, uh, did you have a dumpster?
So, right, right here, this, I know the building's here, and I can't turn it off just cause it's part of Google Earth, but these last two, um, uh, doors, I believe one of those is set to have a compactor.
Oh, it's a compactor, so you're like, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, uh, and they would...
Sort of a dumpster?
Yeah, it's a dumpster, I mean...
Well, I'd be comfortable if it would just match the door, and it doesn't have to be automatic, because there's nothing in our code about automatic dumpsters, I've seen that before, maybe you have too. It kinda bothers me.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a little excessive to ask, for that kinda thing.
To enclose, uh...
She, she suggested automatic closing doors, so that...
So people don't leave them open and...
Yeah, and we're kinda thinking that might be a little bit, I mean, I'm sure it's expensive, probably a pain about to maintain, and we don't have anything necessarily in the code that's requiring, I think is what you're saying, so...
It'd be nice to match your building, that'd be about what we, what we think would be nice for aesthetics, but, uh...
Sure, if you're asking for a...
It sounds like I'm, I'm Pam-bashing tonight, but I'm really, really not.
I, I happen to like Pam. The, uh, dumpsters and closures is, is something we are, are familiar with doing, and I don't believe there's a, a problem doing it, and in fact, as long as we're doing precast panels, and, you know, we can make dumpster enclosure, precast panels, either lay on the side, or, or, you know, white CMU.
Make it look nice, you know?
Yeah, it, we can make it the same material as the building, if, if it's required.
Yeah.
But, uh, automatic closing gate, we'll, we'll have swing gates with a chain and padlock, maybe, uh...
I think that's reasonable, that's reasonable. So, I'm, I'm just thinking that there's probably nothing that's gonna pop up that would change necessarily, you know, he's not gonna bring something that's gonna make you swing the other direction. I, I tend to say, I, I, I really don't think there's gonna be, from everything you've shown us, I don't think that, that the public road is gonna, there's gonna be anything that's gonna be really visible, especially if you do some upgrades to the landscaping, as opposed to others. Once you're on site, like, like they just mentioned back there?
It's on site.
It's on site.
Yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't matter, it's, it's the, traveling public, it's the neighborhood across the street, and you've shown that in here, um, that there's really, you know, you'd have to see through that dome that's there, through the trees, and we're still, how far away did you say that is, so?
Um, here.
Almost six hundred and sixty-nine point seven feet, you know, to the front of the building, add a little bit more on to get to the units.
Forty-five feet beyond there.
You're at seven hundred feet.
That little tru- triangle of trees right underneath the menu spot up there, that's a great place to drop some evergreens, because then it aligns between the building and that residential.
Yeah.
The entrance to the neighborhood there.
This, this here?
Yeah, that area there, I don't know if you can keep that or whatever, but...
Yeah, I, uh, mm, I, I think we only cleared trees where we needed to, and, uh, I don't think there's any... I don't think we're touching that too much out here, but if you were asking about the distance, what I like to do is, I was parked here and I took that picture, straight out to the door, and, and you can see how high you are at the residence and coming down, which doesn't work in my favor.
Yeah, that's right, too.
But I mean, that's, that's six hundred and sixty-four feet.
And then you're another forty-five feet back there.
Yeah, so you're seven, you're over seven hundred. Yeah, so, yeah, here it's like nine hundred, if I turn the model off, you can see where, um, you know, that's nine hundred, not even yet to the middle of the building.
Yeah.
You need a telescope to see it.
I know, I...
Well, and, and that's, that was part of my argument, and I know she's mad at me about...
Oh, yeah.
I'm gonna have to tree for my...
Right? So, I, I'll, I'm, I'm thinking, you know... We make a suggestion that, 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 you know, some upgrades to the, to the landscaping as suggested at the meeting to be reviewed administratively.
Yeah.
And I think, I think, I think we're all kinda saying the same thing, I think the distance and everything.
And, do you want me to, uh, call for an administrative meeting once I get some more information on HAC units?
I mean...
I, I don't think it's that far out, I just don't think it's next week, I think it's probably the week after. And I can do another sightline study.
What was the distance that you thought the minimum that it would be, back off the front of the building?
Forty-five feet, you thought, because it's the call that first column grid where you're gonna wanna say your units.
So I wonder, you know, we could say as long as there's nothing over six feet closer than forty feet from the front of the building.
I'm fine with that, yeah, that, I think that...
Yeah, no, that's very reasonable.
I think that, 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 again, I don't...
Yeah, why didn't I think of that?
Again, I don't, I, I think we're more...
Brian is here, cause I haven't had a chance to talk. He's still up there, okay.
I moved past the screening about thirty minutes ago.
So, okay, so besides the screening, was there, it's been so long we've talked about it, was there anything else we're talking about?
Does he need to go through all this stuff?
Brad, is there other things?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back to...
Yeah.
Should we take a recess?
We already talked about the dumpster enclosure, and you, you've acknowledged and said you could use the precast and...
We can, yeah, if, if not using the precast, we will make it in a, a similar material as the building, cause I know that...
Just provide that, I have no problem reviewing it administratively, if that's okay with the commission. Um, sight lighting was fine. Engineer will talk about the stormwater basins, you're going to the BZA for parking and apron width, I believe.
Had that last week, but it's got approved.
Okay, that's good. Then the biggest thing that I continue to come to is, what's going on to the, with that driveway, that was a seventy-five-foot easement, is now a driveway, back to an easement. It looks like it's going to the trailer parking, it dead-ends now, that's, that is my biggest issue.
Future development, yeah, let's, uh...
So what's going on with the trailers back at the...
So, uh, the trailers are the, I learned, the trailers are parked, that's leased land from the current owner, from Norfolk Southern, for, and I don't wanna disclose how much a month, cause I thought it was ridiculous, but, um, that's gonna go away, cause as soon as he moves, that lease disappears, and he's gotta move those trailers.
You wouldn't start a new lease with them?
We don't need that storage. We, he's using it to store, it's, it's a land lease to store, and it's probably, if I had to guess, it's, it's probably a lease, so that he can have access across their tracks, because Norfolk Southern does not like to give permanent access easements across their tracks, so as long...
Maybe you could provide that easement for review?
Um...
I'm just concerned that...
I have it, I have it, yes.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that we don't know the intent of it, um, and, you know, you're, you're making a significant investment, which we all love, and we want to see the ugly things go away, so we wanna make sure that that is going away as part of this project.
Yeah, and I talked to, I'm sorry.
And, and then I was gonna say, then my only other issue is, it tur- I don't know how you're terminating that driveway, it just stops on the paper, it needs to stop with some degree of, you know, thought for the safety purposes.
Yeah, and, um, I don't know why Matt left that on there, cause the owner agreed, and we talked through that, that's access to a future, uh, development, if they parcel off that last triangle of land, it comes to a point there. So if we look at an overall site, which this one's good, C one oh three, um... There's the building, and then there's this parcel, which is all part of their purchase, and at some point in time, they will probably parcel off this land, if they feel that they can benefit from a separate development here. So as of this project going forward today, this access road won't be there, however, I think we are taking utilities down that and, and capping them at that line.
So, yeah, I don't know how you would parcel that off without frontage on a dedicated road, but that's a different conversation.
Well, um, well, that is a good point, so we would have to parcel it off and Jerry Meanger some, some frontage on the Valley View Road, right?
And, and I'm just gonna say, a lot of that, that likely wouldn't meet the code.
Really, really challenging.
Yeah.
I, I would just encourage the commission to, um, you know, it, it needs to terminate in a meaningful way, so we would need to see that in a revised plan.
Well, the, okay, so the, the road, I don't think is being built.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, if that road is for a potential future development of a landlocked parcel that would be owned separately by a different developer, then the road should be built at that time, in the future, not now.
Right, right, and that's what we talked the client into.
In other words, Matt Weber just didn't delete the driveway from the drawings.
Damn, Matt.
That's all you had to say.
So you get approved, it's subject to removal of that, and if that ever wants to come to fruition, you have to come back for a plan for it.
Yes, sir.
Multiple seasons.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, other than that piece, um, and I would stipulate that, I, I think the city does want to see, or at least my opinion, would wanna see that easement, have that forwarded to the building department, so we can take a peek at it, and just make sure it extinguishes, and if it doesn't, then there's some separate issues of access to a non-conformity site, and all that.
Yeah, I don't even think he's going for the easement at this point yet, cause that road may, I don't know, he may never develop that, right?
Yeah, but as it stands right now, there's a use down there that's not permitted, and we just need to know that use is going away when this project...
It's, it's my understanding that the current owner of the property, it will, will need to vacate that equipment and storage off of that lot.
So we just wanna see that.
Understood. Is that like in an agreement, or that, uh, like a, a sale agreement that he wants to?
There, there's some mechanism that, that gives them rights to, to do what they're doing now.
Yeah, well...
We'll just review that.
Yeah, we, I have an, an house counsel, I'll, I'll see what she says, maybe she can write something up to...
Sure, and, and can share with the building department, and Mr. Gaddati can review it, and I'd be glad to talk to him.
Should I just send it to you first, and, or Nino?
Send it to you.
Nino, okay. And, you know, the, the client might have that in the purchase agreement also, so...
You could redact out the cost of the agreement, you know, the purchase, and we can take a peek at that.
The snippets.
Sure.
Of it, okay.
However you wanna convey that message.
And that's currently what, onsite storage, or?
I don't know what it is.
Outside storage, junk?
You got a bunch of junk back there, that I think the city would like to see go away. Yeah, I, it's kinda hard to believe that your folks are spending a couple bucks that they're gonna wanna look at that.
No, they, they, um, they like my design, and, um, I, I think they want a nice clean site, and they wanna live in harmony with the municipality. I mean, they're in Macedonia now.
Yeah, correct.
Listen, it's gonna look a lot nicer than what's there now, so it's good. Big investment. Yeah, I just need to see, you know, have Matt remove that, that clears up that concern, and then we can take a peek at that, just to make sure that that use extinguishes upon transfer. I'd feel comfortable with that.
Good call.
I agree. That was all I...
All right, jot some notes down here, so, yeah, it's a removal of future, roads of the future development, review of, uh, the lease agreement for the stores, whatever that is, um, those are the two big.
Yeah, and sure, that extinguishes upon transfer, and then, um, any future road lots split, or otherwise, we'd have to come back to the commission for approval.
July?
Yeah, yeah, my turn.
Really, cool, okay.
All right, yeah, thank you. Okay, I'll, I'll try to be quick here and paraphrase some of this, uh, you guys submitted, uh, some detailed construction drawings, and, and that's great, a lot more detail than we often get for planning commissions, so...
Oh, Matt's drawings?
Matt's drawings, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Um, so, I, I've reviewed at a high level here, just for planning commission purposes, uh, we have not moved into, uh, the detailed review of those plans, I always wait for this body to give an approval before I, uh, perform any real detailed review of the plans in front of you there, or the stormwater cats, just in case something changes coming out of this meeting, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
Uh, so that's where we stand there, uh, stormwater, uh, you'll have to do the standard, uh, long-term inspection and maintenance agreement for the detention ponds, in which, uh, the owner will maintain the ponds in perpetuity. Brian already brought up the driveway, I was gonna bring up that exact same topic, thank you. Uh, sanitary sewer service, uh, sound, looks like you have a lift station, you're gonna pump out the back up to Abraham Way.
To the north.
To the north, correct, which probably is a good thing, cause I don't think there's gravity service on Valley View Road, so you probably have to go that way.
Yeah.
Uh, but it does, uh, fall with on, within railroad property land, I don't know if you were aware of that, the force main that you're showing.
Yeah, I think, um, Peak Nano, we have a meeting Thursday.
Yeah.
With an engineer from Norfolk Southern and a consultant for, uh, real estate easement.
Okay.
And, um, Peak Nano can't, can't close on the land, they can't get the funding from the bank until they have a permanent access easement. So the neighbor to the north already has a, uh...
JWD.
JWD already has a permanent access agreement with them, because I think at one point in time they did a land swap.
Yeah, that was gonna be my next comment too, but go ahead.
Yeah, so I think what they're gonna try and do is, is we're gonna ask for both of them to be permanent.
Yeah.
Um, because we do have a rail spur feeding this, so that's usually a decent trade-off.
Yeah.
Not only that, it's not, it's not the main line, that, what we're coming off of is also a, they call it a siding.
Spur of spur.
Yeah, it's a spur of spur, cause that one goes up to the old stamping plant, right? So, at the very least, you know, we'd like to piggyback off of an existing permanent access agreement, cause we don't, we don't see it as any hair off of their back, because it's already a permanent one.
Yeah, so, in, in, in other words, Peak Nano is working with the railroad to gain...
Yes, sir.
Uh, permission, if we will, uh, to install this sanitary force main on, across that property to get to the manhole where you gotta get to.
Yes, sir.
All right, that's great, uh, and also would need approval from Summit County, uh, as well, because they, uh, own the sanitary sewer system, so...
Okay.
Uh, so that's good, and then that kinda leads me, my next one is, I see that the driveway that, uh, you're gonna build to the north, uh, you're gonna pave that driveway.
It will be improved, yes.
Would be improved, fantastic, I, I think that's a great thing, cause it's, it's been a bit of a mess, uh, for a long time. Uh, but the same thing, it, that seems to fall across land owned by the railroad, and JWD is already using that. Correct me if I'm wrong, e- ingress egress and the right to improve the driveway will be part of Peak Nano's negotiation, that you're describing?
I'll take note of it, I haven't, I haven't thought of it, I, I know that we have, uh, in the budget to improve all the way to the cul-de-sac.
And that's great, yeah, that's what you show on the drawings, uh, but again, it appears that part of the driveway you're improving actually falls across railroad property.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure...
It's not all Peak Nano.
Appreciate it if we improved.
Oh, everybody will appreciate it, yes.
Yeah, I'm hoping.
I, I just, from our point of view, we don't wanna just blindly approve a plan for you to work over the property line without some, uh, concurrence from that other property owner, I guess is my point. It's hard for us to grant the permit without knowing the neighbor is okay with this.
Yeah, and I, I, I found it interesting that if you zoom in to where that property crosses, although... although it doesn't show it here, if I take off the terrain. That it splits into two roads crossing.
Yep, it does.
And the only thing I can think of is JWD did not want the heavy trucks carrying the concrete crossing there tearing up their road, that's the only thing I could think of.
Yeah, I don't know, I, I have seen that before, I was curious, I don't know why that is.
It's, it's something that, you know, and it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a benefit to our discussions when we're talking to Norfolk too, so hey, we're not, we're not adding another crossing, it's already there.
Correct, yeah, yeah, so, yeah, just when you have permission, I guess, to work on Norfolk Southern's property, however that comes to you, please share it with us, so.
Pick it back, I don't know how can we issue a permit for you to do some on somebody else's property?
That's what I was saying.
Even with the permission, probably have to go to the law department because we, you know, they should really be asking permission to do something on their property even though you are gonna be doing it. But I, you know, I can legally issue permit for you to do work on somebody else's property.
That was my point, you know.
So in the, in the permit language, would you say this does not apply to Norfolk property or?
Yeah, we, we're able to give you permit on what's in, on your property. You know, if you wanna do something on somebody else's property, legally, they're the ones that should be applying for a permit. Unless you guys work some kind of agreement that the attorney will, you know.
Will accept it.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm thinking.
Okay.
Yeah, so Trevor, if you could provide us whatever information or permission that Peak Nano will get from the railroad, I think that's the starting point.
Exactly.
And then between myself, Nino, our law director and yourself, we can figure out the proper way to permit it, so. I don't know.
Yeah, that is, I didn't think of that.
Too deep into the details, I just wanna call it to attention.
Yeah, I'll, I'll hand it over to counsel about her deal with it.
Yeah, there, there you go, now you're talking, I like that idea. So, so that's great, if you have a retaining wall more than forty-eight inches, so we need a stamped design from a PE. I noticed you had a detail in there for retaining wall, so just be aware of that, please.
Okay.
And then the last thing, the land bank parking that you show on the, the parking schematic, I guess, let's call it. The land bank parking appears to conflict with one of the detention ponds that Matt Weber has shown on his drawing, the southerly one. So, something's gotta give and you don't have to answer on the spot how it's gonna be, I just want you to know.
I can answer if, if a new tenant moves into this building.
Yeah.
Say a call center that has a thousand employees, two shifts, and it takes up all five hundred and you'll see a different architect up here asking to move the pond and give it more pocket of parking, so.
So move the pond further south if you're gonna build the park.
Yeah, so it'll, it's, you know, it's not underground detention, not at this point, so, you know, it's just, it's just dirt work, dirt work, right?
Okay.
You could always move mid-south where the trailers are.
No, it's a different town.
Make a, make a mound and screen it.
Where would the trailers go?
On the back of the train?
Yeah. Beyond city limits.
Beyond city limits, right.
That's all I have, thank you, yeah, otherwise I'm, I'm good.
No, I, I understand all of your comments. You did ask wet pond or dry?
Yeah, I guess it really doesn't so much matter, that's your choice, I, I just threw that on there because it popped in my head.
And I looked at it and I, you know, Matt usually does wet ponds.
Neither's acceptable to us.
Yeah, so he's got some inlets and, and he's got an outlet, right?
When we review his detailed counts, we'll answer our question.
Give him a hard time for me.
Oh, yes, I'm gonna, I'm gonna harass him if he didn't delete the driveway south.
Oh, I already did.
Oh, you did, okay, all right, all right. Otherwise I'm good, I'm comfortable with approval pending administrative review, like sometimes do.
Nino, do you have anything else?
I ask this question all the time, do you have a schedule of events there when this company's existing? Gonna remove all the equipment there or when you're gonna start it?
Well, they haven't closed in the land yet.
Okay.
So, I, I don't anticipate it happening beforehand, I don't, I just don't see that owner doing anything until he knows he's sold the land. So some of the things we're waiting on is the Norfolk Southern agreements and then power will serve letters, and both of those are in the works and they're. Norfolk Southern, I think, is, is probably a little further along in the process, but it's a longer process than what the power companies design, you know, because I'm not, I'm not the person I talked to about the, the power requirements and what we're asking for and, and what design they have to do. They got somebody on it, design is being done, you know, because there's, there's gonna be power for, for day one and then there's gonna be increased power to follow, is how those arrangements are going because they can't provide the six hundred, one point twenty-one gigawatts of power that they want.
And it's all coming from Germany? Germany, I think the equipment's all from Germany.
I'm sorry?
That, oh, this is equipment, most of them are coming from Germany.
Yeah.
And I understand that a lot of those, they do not, do not have your listing approval?
No, their, their equipment does.
Oh, they are, okay.
Yeah, because you brought that up at the first meeting and I think Kevin, the project manager. Has looked into it, yeah. Thank you.
Anything else? You guys got questions? Beat them up for me. I, I was starting, I was trying to jot down notes of, of things to include, so maybe I'll, I'll start with that. I missed something.
We're, we're good with the design?
I think so.
Okay.
Make sure.
Just wanna make sure.
Do you want me, do you want?
No, 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 I'm good.
All right, so I'll make a motion to approve the plan, subject to the reports of the engineer and planner. Some additional items, Susan, if you're ready. Dumpster enclosure to match the building. Removal of the road to the future development. A review of the lease agreement for the outdoor storage to make sure it extinguishes upon sale. All right. No additional roof screening with the stipulation of no mechanicals greater than six feet closer than forty feet from the front of the building. Yeah, so, so no additional roof screening needed with the stipulation that there's no mechanicals greater than six feet closer than forty feet from the front of the building. And then additional landscaping as discussed. And all of this could be approved administrative. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Mr. France, anything?
I thought it was an excellent.
It was good.
So I write stuff down, I remember for a long time.
Nice job, Susan.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Great work, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
And there was one.
Oh, I, I gotta show you something. It's just a pen.
You ever heard of it?
Well, it's, yeah, right there.
It looks like.
That's why he didn't show up.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we can do it, yeah, this is an easy one.
So, what I wanted to show here was, it was off the edge of the. It was all off the edge, but I dropped a Humvee in their parking lot because they might have some government contracts.
You're really keen to add on this.
The detail, the types of cars in the parking lot of the road drakes that we got.
Where's the rusted?
That's pretty cool. Most markets.
Very cool, thank you for bringing all that in.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, Sam's idea. Just wanna blame ourselves.
We'll go back to what was issue or item one, now item three is the lot consolidation for parcels at ninety-seven sixty-four Valley View Road. Nobody here will discuss it, but we could probably still go over it. You wanna start, Mr. France, your thoughts?
Yeah, so essentially, the applicant is proposing to combine a portion of parcel thirty-three, one thirty-two sixty-eight, about thirty-five thousand square feet with the existing parcel to the south, which is thirty-three zero one one nine five, or addressed as ninety-seven sixty-four Valley View. The result is that the consolidation will make parcel thirty-three zero one one nine five the address ninety-seven sixty-four Valley View, enlarge to two point one one six seven acres. The corner parcel then would be reduced to three point three one four eight acres. Lot splits and consolidations are regulated in this planning portion of the code, specifically eleven seventeen oh three B. There's really no issue with the depth, there's no concern. I had noted that zoning, but I looked at an old zoning map, I have an updated one now. That was rezoned, I think, in twenty-eleven.
Correct.
So my memory is escaping me a bit, I must have worked on it. But it was rezoned to BO, so the, what I reference as R one is actually BO. There's no concern there, looking at that district, you need at least an acre, so no concern as the parcel will be larger than that, so I'd recommend approval.
So, go ahead, go ahead.
Are they both residential?
No, one's, one's B one, one's BO, business office.
So when you combine the two, what is the final parcel gonna be, or?
The one, the one to the south will be all B.
One.
One, and the one to the north will be all BO.
BO is?
So what is this?
Business office. Business?
Business office.
That's what the new parcel would be?
The new parcel, all the vacant land will be B one.
What's permitted in B one?
BO, B one. What's permitted in that district?
Yeah.
Oh, hang on.
It's kinda loud, isn't it?
Building care facility, probably coming up.
Well, yeah, that, if I remember correctly, that, that is why it was rezoned. Now that I think about that, it was, but that is one of the uses, long-term care facilities, skilled nursing home, senior, senior residents, these are all conditionally permitted, so they have to come to the planning commission. Banks.
They're all pretty soft uses.
Offices, yeah, pretty soft uses.
Well, I wonder why he wanted to, he's not here, but consolidate it, what's the point, if, if they're different zoning?
Just to add more land on the vacant piece to make it more developable, would be my guess.
The vacant one, but it's, it's residential, no?
No.
He, that was, he had it wrong, he was looking at an old map, it's the B, BO.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, I, I was confused.
Yeah, it's business office.
So B one district is, I guess the reason why I'm asking this question is because I know we had a lot of discussion regards to that other facility that's going on by the bowling alley. And so are we looking to possibly consolidate this and then have it zoned to be something that would allow a facility that would tax the police and EMS and fire and stuff like that even more so?
Well, it's, it's already allowed now.
It is already allowed now, okay, so we're not, we're not doing anything that's going to change that, but I guess that would be my concern.
No, it's already, the, the, going to business office, you'd have a more likelihood that you'd get something different than what you just described than staying as, if it were residential. But it, it's irrelevant, it's already zoned that way.
That's what I wanted to make sure, is that we're not changing the zoning component to be.
Flipping the acreage is all. So it meets the requirements, so there's. I only commented because I looked at it and obviously didn't remember there was a rezoning and I'm like, oh, at least it'll match zoning wise because it looked like it was split somebody previously. But that's fine, it's all business office.
Okay, it's fine.
So I, I don't see any reason to not approve it.
Mr. July, you think?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it looks good to me, we're not creating any new parcels, same number of parcels when we're all done. Parcel isn't non-conforming, it's not landlocked, nothing weird like that. Brian already touched on the zoning, kinda gets cleaned up here, which is a good thing. So I recommend we approve it. And then Chairman, it looks like the surveyor of record has signed the plat, but the applicant or the owner has not. So, once the owner signs, then you and I can sign.
Okay.
But we should not sign until the owner does.
Okay. Nino, you have anything on that? Any questions here?
Nope.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All right. Think that's it? Sign this one. So I wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Tony, you want a second? Tony, you seconding that?
Yeah, I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.